Good evening and welcome to the Valentine's Day edition, February 14, 2022 of the Mayor Council work sessions. Tonight, we have one topic for discussion, which will be the Pepco electric vehicle charging stations. But before we, before we start, I did want to make note that we got a, a report that former mayor of Gaithersburg, Bruce Goldenson, has suffered a medical emergency over the, over the weekend and he was last we heard he was in the hospital. And we just, I just want to express on behalf of all of us, our concern and our hope that for a full and speedy recovery for Bruce. We look forward to seeing him at, at meetings soon and you know, why don't we, why don't we do a quick moment of silence, just to, just to say a quick prayer for Bruce? Thank you all very much. I'm sure he'll appreciate that. Okay, so tonight we have our work session discussion topic Pepco electric vehicle charging stations. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Dennis Enslinger to kick us off here.
Evening Mayor and City Council members. Wanted to just make a few brief comments. You know, as electric vehicles become more prevalent in the community, we wanted to take this opportunity tonight to provide you with some information about some upcoming electrical vehicle charging stations that will be implemented in the city through the Pepco Cooperative that we've been looking at over the past year. And this is really for informational purposes and we're not really looking for any specific direction regarding this information, but wanted to let you and the public know about these upcoming charging stations. And with that, I will turn it over to Devon.
Thank you very much. Tech team, if you could pull up the presentation. Thank you very much. So it's very fitting that we're talking about this on Valentine's Day because I love EVs. So my name is Devon Moran and for those of you I haven't met yet, I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the city. So next slide please, please. So part of electric vehicle infrastructure really fits into a lot of the goals that we have for the city, which is of course encouraging emission free vehicles because of the greenhouse gas emission reduction and the improved air quality. And I just love to show our little man in a mask who really represents how much we want to clean our air. One of the most prevalent ways to get an emission free vehicle is to have an electric vehicle charger. Next slide, please. There are generally two types of chargers that you'll see being installed around our communities. The most popular is the level two charger. A level two charger is a slow charger. It takes about eight hours to get a full charge and costs about 18 cents per kilowatt hour for that charge. And it, and if you can do the math in reverse, which I can't, so I had to ask for it. It averages about 25 miles of range per hour charged. The next slide will show the direct circuit fast chargers. They charge much more quickly at a rate of about 60 to 90 minutes for a full charge. So they cost a little bit more to the, to the charger users, 34 cents per kilowatt hour. They also have a much stronger drive on transformers, so they're not as prevalent in our community or in communities in general, but they are much more fast. Next slide, please. So this map shows all the existing publicly accessible EV chargers in the city of Gaithersburg. So those are represented by the black dots showing existing. And we're going to talk about the four proposed locations that are represented by the pink squares. These are not indicative of all electric vehicle charging stations in the city. For example, we just put in three at Public Works as we get ready to electrify that fleet. But since those are not publicly accessible, they're not shown on this map. Next slide, please. So the first proposed location for the installation of level two chargers is at City Hall or Griffith Park. So these would be right in the front designating two locations. So there are three little noted colors to pay attention to, and I want to make sure I say this right. I'm sorry. So the green block indicates where the actual charger itself would sit. The yellow box is showing the service point. And then the blue box represents the metered cabinet. So of course, these aren't the most perfectly drawn images, but they just give you an idea of where the equipment will be and will exist. And then of course, the red block is outlining the parking spaces that will be dedicated to EV charging, where you'll be able to access the charging cables. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed locations for Morris Park. Again, the same color coding applies. So the red block indicates the single parking spot that would be used at this location. The green designated the charging station, the yellow, the service point, and then the blue being the meter cabinet. Next slide. And then this is the third location also for level two chargers. So there would be two chargers here. This is the Public Works site also servicing Robertson Park. Two chargers here, each represented by a green dot, taking up a total of four spaces. The one blue cabinet, the meter cabinet, and then the service point would be that yellow square much further into the land there. We didn't, we decided to merge Robertson Park and Public Works because of the limited parking that is already over at Robertson Park. And so this is just a quick walk across the street. Next slide, please. So Lakeland's Park were also dedicating for parking spaces too, with the same general concept, except here there will be the DC or the direct circuit fast chargers. And this was the location recommended by Pepco to have the DC fast chargers. They noted that there's much more limited long-term parking in this area and the electric infrastructure already exists to support the much more demand that the DC fast chargers will have here. The DC fast chargers are a little bit larger, so that's why the little green boxes have grown a little bit from the previous pictures. But again, the same, same kind of color coding follows. So the green blocks being the service station or the chargers, blue being the meter cabinet and the green being the service point. Next slide, please. So in order to let everybody know that we are planning to install these chargers, we will be sending all sorts of emails to all the HOAs that are affected, letting them know what's coming. We'll be placing signs at the locations saying that there will be a future EV site. We'll be hopefully getting this up very soon, the map of all publicly available EV chargers on the city website. And of course, we'll always be sharing our updates on Green in Gaithersburg. So my first shameless plug of the evening is to please subscribe to the Green in Gaithersburg Quarterly Newsletter. Next slide, please. So generally, once we would get this project started, it would be a little over five to six months to get everything up and running. Here's just a general outline of how that would play itself out with engineering permitting procurement, construction, and then the commissioning of the chargers. Next slide. And my second shameless plug of the evening is for an event that we're co-sponsoring with Montgomery County on Saturday, March 19th. It's called Go Electric. There will be featuring electric cars there, talking about solar panels, getting solar power in your home, greening your lawn care equipment, whole lot of stuff. There'll be a ton of giveaways. So we encourage everybody to go check it out from 10 to 4 on Saturday, then 18. And next slide. Which I believe is just to ask if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Deb. Appreciate the presentation. I know we're going to have some questions because I saw, I've heard from a couple of council members leading up to this, and I know some of it's going to have to do with, with pricing. And so we're going to go, I'm going to ask a question and then we're going to go to Neil, who had, who I saw the first, who approached me with the first set of questions, and then we'll go to Ryan after that and whoever else wants to. My, my question is regarding the pricing of getting of these charges at the stations. Do you know if Pepco has the ability to adjust the pricing after these things are installed? I would, I would assume so, but do we know?
As far as I am aware, and Dennis can correct me, these are tariff rates, so they're set in advance by the Public Service Commission or approved in advance by the Public Service Commission.
Well, I'm not saying, because the Public Service Commission, in this case, this is a little different, I think, than, than, than usual, because usually Pepco is in kind of a monopoly position where they're, they're the only ones who really service the area. If you want to power in your house, generally you gotta work with Pepco, but there are going to be other places. There are other places, as you showed in your chart in City Gaithersburg where the charges already exist and you might be able to get, Pepco may find, you know, six months after installing these things that people are choosing to go to the other places because they can get advantageous pricing elsewhere. I was just curious if, if they'd be able to do anything about it or what?
Yeah, I, I do not know that answer, Dennis.
I believe that my understanding is they would have to go back to the Public Service Commission to get the tariff changed in order to reduce or increase the rate. This was part of some considerations on the Pepco Exelon merger for them trying to reduce the greenhouse impact they would have in the communities that they are located in.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Maybe we'll revisit that point, but I'm going to go to Neil first and Ryan and whoever else after.
All right. So thank you, Mayor, and thanks Deb and Dennis for the presentation and the information. You know, first of all, I'm absolutely 100% supportive of whatever it takes to get more EV charging stations around, particularly people that live in multifamily communities, apartment buildings and condos and things like that. We need to make sure that charging facilities are available and not just for people who can put a charger in their garage. That said, I'm wondering if this is really the right deal for us. So I know you're not looking for our input, but let me just say that doing a little bit of homework, the, the price to charge at one of the DCFC stations, the one that's planned for Lakeland's Park, at 34 cents a kilowatt hour is really high. It's the equivalent of about $26 to fill up a gas tank to, to do a fill up of a, of a, say a Tesla that has a 75 kilowatt hour battery. That's not very different than what it would cost to fill up a gas tank of a typical vehicle, or at least a reasonably fuel efficient one. The Tesla's charging stations, which are, exist in our community as well, charge on average to about 25 cents a kilowatt hour. So it's hard to believe that the company that generates the electricity has to charge a significant surcharge above what the, what the rate is for a private company providing that service. Also, I don't understand why the slow charger and the fast charger costs different amounts per kilowatt hour because a kilowatt hour of electricity is the same amount of energy as regardless of the fact that it takes an hour or 10 hours to, to put it into your vehicle. And finally, I'm just, my understanding is that we're providing these facilities, spaces to Pepco at no charge of rent to the city. And again, private companies like Tesla and others are, you know, renting or buying the real estate to provide these services. So their costs are, they have to acquire the electricity, they have to acquire the real estate and they're charging less than Pepco. I just don't understand why this is a good deal. So my only comment really, because since you're not looking for our input, is that I hope as we go forward in the future and do more of these relationships, that we find some other partners that are, you know, more economical for our residents. I think we're, you know, we need to find charging stations, but we don't want to, we, we want to give our residents the best deal we can.
Deb and Dennis, do you guys want to address that? Should we go to Ryan?
No, I, yeah, I don't have a comment for that.
I, I realize it's, it's an awkward position to put staff in, in having to answer for Pepco. You guys don't really have to do that, but if you have, if you have any insight, feel free to, to give it to us.
I think the comment is we should, I don't, you know, answering for Pepco is obviously not anyone's job in this, in this call, but perhaps making some outreach to some other providers might be a good step as we go forward. And I think competition is always a good thing, especially in an emerging area like this where we really need to, to step up our game and everybody's game.
I think the only thing, yeah, the only thing I would add is, you know, this is a perpetuity. It is a five-year agreement that would allow this city to cancel the agreement after five years or Pepco to do the same under the provisions of the contract.
For Dennis, for the public's edification, you may want to explain a little bit about, you know, maybe reiterate the tariff piece and how we got here. We are, we aren't out, we aren't allowed to negotiate these rates, nor can we negotiate a revenue share. Though I try revenue share for the city for giving the space, but we certainly did try.
Yeah, again, as Tanisha has pointed out, this was part of the Exelon Pepco merger. And with the tariffs, we have an ability to make public comment during the time of the public hearing for the tariffs. And we did, I believe, make comment on a number of different things during that process. We also tried to go back as part of this agreement and see if there were some ways that we could either get cost sharing, which we have on some of our other facilities that we've installed on our sites as we upgrade buildings. But Pepco indicated they could not allow that under the provisions of the tariff.
Thank you, Dennis. We'll go to Ryan.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to start off by echoing Deb's Valentine's Day pun. I too love EVs. I actually own a fully electric vehicle. I'm very excited about the prospect of the city partnering with other organizations, whether it's Pepco or others, as we go forward to expand access to EV charging that is competitively priced, as Neil suggested, and that will hopefully expand equitable access to charging stations. And I also, I noted the other pun, I don't know if this was intentional or otherwise, in one of the last slides, shameless plug was a good, a good pun for, for our, our EV discussion as well. I sent a, a number of questions that I had planned to ask tonight onto staff in advance, just to give them a heads up of some things that I'm going to ask. A number of the questions I wanted to ask were sort of detailed logistical questions about how these stations will operate. But I did just want to make the general point that I'm glad to see that conditions imposed by the State Public Service Commission during the Pepco Exelon merger proceedings a few years ago did require that the utility invest in various clean energy investments for the community. I was actually pretty involved in that, representing a coalition of nonprofits and elected officials and others trying to really push for those conditions to be imposed at the merger proceeding. Because that's one of the powers that the State Public Service Commission has is to impose reasonable conditions when two utilities are trying to merge and we were able to take advantage of that. So it's been a number of years since that merger was approved, but it's nice to see that those conditions are starting to be rolled out and implemented. I take as, as a fair point, Councilmember Harris's comments about whether or not this is the most competitive or best way for us to proceed as a city. But generally speaking, it's a good thing to have more EV chargers. But I do hope that we will continue to think carefully about what the best deal is for the city, particularly since in this case we are acting as a property owner, sort of akin to a private property owner, as Neil pointed out. And we have the leverage to decide who gets to make use of our property at these different locations. And so I, I think that is a fair question for him to be asking. That said, I'm not aware of any private EV charging providers who are knocking down our door to place stations around the city beyond what's already there. So I do think this could still pose a, a good opportunity for us. But we do want to try and be careful about working out, you know, whatever the, the costs are to make sure they're competitive. And in that light, I wanted to ask, I don't know if staff knows the answer to this question, but does Pepco use a third-party vendor? Either in terms of, you know, the capital, you know, the, the, the actual hard equipment that's installed? Or as somebody who operates the equipment or collects the fees? Or is this all sort of an in-house Pepco operation?
It's all an in-house Pepco operation.
Okay, so Pepco basically gets the money when, when somebody pulls up their electric vehicle and plugs in and charges. And again, I don't know if we know the answer to this yet, but, and it's a little bit in the weeds, but how are, how do people make payment on these facilities? Is it credit card? Is it through a mobile app? Is it both?
I believe the facilities that they're installing for us are only mobile apps.
Okay, okay. And I did want to point out, I think this is what Tanisha was getting at, is that, you know, the State Public Service Commission regulates these tariff rates that Pepco can charge. And there is, it's, it's not always utilized as much as it should be by members of the public, because, you know, people have other things going on. But there is a public process anytime the Public Service Commission is considering changes to rates or a request is being made by a utility to change or increase their rates. And so I would encourage us as a city to pass on information to consumer ratepayers, citizens within our city and as a city government, and, and the city government, of course, also is a consumer of electricity to keep an eye on that. And if it's appropriate at future times for us to weigh in on those ratepayer proceedings. You know, if Pepco in the future wants to seek a hike in the tariff for their EV chargers, maybe the city of Gaithersburg shows up and says, we don't think that the PSC should approve that tariff change, and here's why. There might be an opportunity for us to at least try to help influence those tariff rates in the future. The other thing I wanted to ask about is who can park in these spots? In many cases, when you have an EV charging station spot, it is exclusively for electric vehicles to park in. And usually only if they're actually plugged in and charging. How do we see these spots being labeled or limited in terms of access? Are only electric vehicles going to be able to park there? Are they going to have to be plugged in when they're parked there? Have we thought that far down the line, or is that too in the weeds at this point?
So we did discuss this a little bit. We, where we currently have EV chargers, we haven't had really problems with people not using an EV being parked in that space. They will be designated as electric vehicle charging stations with a universal symbol painted on the ground that the spots are intended for that use. But we don't have any regulation that prevents someone with a regular, with a non-EV from parking there, or someone actively not charging from parking there. We've seen a couple of our neighboring jurisdictions explore these options. But without having a ton of problems, there haven't really, there's not been a great written out code that we think we should follow immediately.
Sure. Okay. Well, that might be something we want to think about in the future. Or maybe we decide we don't want to go there and we want to be different than other jurisdictions and just, you know, has people need to charge and if the spots are available, they can be used and otherwise if people aren't using them, the chargers, they can still park there if there's a need. But we can cross that bridge when we get to it, but I just wanted to ask if staff had come up with an answer to that. On the aerial representation of the public works spaces, these are, these are intended to be, you know, parallel parking charger spaces. And I have to confess, I don't think I've seen parallel parking designed EV charger stations that I can think of. And I was curious, especially for vehicles that might have the charge port on the left side. How do they charge at a parallel parking station? Does the cable just come around the back of the vehicle? Is there concern that it will jut out into the roadway?
They have retractable cords for, for charging. So we, I envision that people would bring it over to the side of the vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't. Brian, the cords will be long enough to charge from either side on those particular locations.
Okay.
And then the cords are retractable.
All right. So there's little risk that they'll be kind of like strewn across the road or anything like that. Okay. I know that Pepco has some incentives for residential charging stations. I don't know if they have other types of incentives for people who use their public EV charger facilities or not. But I was curious if staff could either look into that or if you knew whether they did. And if so, if there's a way to have the city help promote access to those incentives, possibly even maybe Pepco placing some kind of information on the charging station facility itself to say, you know, sign up for this, that, or the other, and you get a discount on your, on your EV charging or whatever. But I want to make sure, because I, I do understand that as part of the various investments that Pepco had to make under the Exelon merger conditions, there's sort of a whole menu of different incentives and ways that people can take advantage of savings for use of electric vehicles. And I just want to make sure we're promoting all those other different ways that might come along with EV charging.
So the incentives that they have for public versus private are very different. So right now, they don't have any listed as benefits for, besides having a charger installed in your home. But we do partner with the Montgomery County Energy Connection, who are constantly updating any sort of incentives that may exist beyond even just what Pepco would offer for electric vehicle promotions, which is part of that event that I shamelessly plugged for March the 19th. So we encourage people to check that out. But no, fortunately, there's nothing.
Great. And then my last question, I guess, is one sort of for how staff, how staff considered aside from, you know, the availability of electric infrastructure, the availability of space, sort of zooming out. Have you looked at, aside from the map that you showed with the black dots and the green squares? Have you, have you sort of looked at how the proposed new stations will coexist with either other existing public chargers from Pepco or other existing chargers from other companies? And, you know, if there's sort of some overarching infrastructure plan there. I, I, I would say that anecdotally, just looking at the map, it looks like the stations are fairly well spread out around the city. But, you know, in consideration of equitable access in terms of locations, things like that, have, did you guys sort of factor all that into your considerations as you were looking for locations?
So Pepco approached us with potential locations. Part of the funding that requirements for the funding was that it had to be on public owned land. So some of the recommendations for places that we asked them to look into, they just weren't able to because of that requirement. But we gave them a couple of locations that we thought would be good. They took us up on all but one. So that's where we came up with that, but it was more anecdotally, there's a big empty space in this area of the map. Let's see if we can get something over there.
Yeah. I mean, there are, to, to Neil's point, again, there are, at least there used to be, I don't know if they still exist, some sort of promotional chargers that were free to use. Although I think those are dwindling now that people are becoming more used to the idea that they're going to have to pay. Do we know if there are free ones on our city map of existing chargers? Do we have good data on, you know, what the rates are, as, as Neil was pointing out, there are, you know, different rates for other chargers around the city? Do we have any data on that?
So that, that, that information is stagnant, so it doesn't change. So what we have in GIS is just looking at it as an asset, so it's not constantly updated. So the only information we have was what was submitted on the permit originally. So we didn't designate whether or not the permit said it would be free or, or not free at that time. But that's certainly something that we can investigate and try to track more.
And you mentioned there's a condition that Pepco used funds allocated to build these facilities that do so on public land. Who, who imposed that condition? Is that from the PSC or is that Pepco's own self-imposed plan to try to go with private property owners or what? Do we know?
I believe it was actually the PSC who imposed that. I don't believe Pepco proposed that. In fact, that was one of the things we talked to them early on when this was going through the Public Service Commission was allowing them to be able to place these on private sites, because we would have better selection in terms of usage. Uh, private sites, because we would have better selection in terms of usage. And how people use those facilities. That was the other thing, Ryan, going back and talking about the locations. We tried to look at locations where there was sufficient time to kind of charge your vehicle long enough. And that's why we focused on some of the park areas, uh, because especially those that have either soccer fields or baseball fields. Um, at those locations.
Okay, I think I see Lynn unmuted. Lynn, did you want to add something?
Yeah, if, if I can add to that, the um, the requirement from the Public Service Commission has a combination of public sites. And then they have also encouraged Pepco to place um stations at apartment complexes. Or condos or other places where there's, you know, kind of a more dense population area. Um, in the last report that was issued by Pepco, which was about two months ago. Um, Pepco was significantly behind in finding, meaning the PSC requirements and finding sites. On private properties. And I think it's, it's exactly the issue that uh that Neil has has raised, is they're not willing to uh pay to be on the site. And many of the apartment complexes have um, uh, denied their requests of to place the sites on the private property.
It's sort of comparable to our other discussions about the five G, five G small cell towers, isn't it? Um, okay, well, that's interesting. I, yeah, I was curious whether or not Pepco actually had any charging stations on private property anywhere around the region. Uh, or not, but um, it sounds like it's doubtful. Um, okay, I guess, uh. Those are all my questions for the moment. Um, again, I mean, I still think we ought to proceed, but I think we ought to proceed with caution. And do what we can to try and maximize the city's position here, given those concerns. Um, I don't know if you all are allowed to share this or not, or if it's sort of proprietary from negotiations, but Dennis said there was a, an additional location or maybe Deb said. Uh, and that Pepco was not willing to do that one location for whatever reason. Are you able to share what that location was? Maybe you're not allowed. I don't know.
I don't know if I'm allowed to or not.
Fine, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give some other people a chance to ask. Okay, before, uh, we're gonna go to Rob then Jim. Tanisha, I saw your hand go up. It, was there something you want to convey real quick?
I was just gonna mention that, um, I think just to give some kudos to Lynn and Dennis as well, we, we negotiated some. Um, I think if you, if you compared our agreement to other communities' agreements, you'd see some differences there. I think we tried to put some protections in. For the city and one of the major ones, I think, is the timeframe. Uh, I think initially they certainly wanted a much longer. Uh, term on that, on those parking spaces. And uh, we were able to get it to five years. Where we either party can, can walk away or reevaluate. And you know, we, we're thinking about that in terms of trying to set the ground and foundation. For future partnerships with, with other partners as well. And and the differences we can get, you know, what, what we can get in, in other agreements. We, we want to make sure that we're looking forward to that. So we're, I just want to make sure everybody understands we're all on the same page there. These Pepco stations are, are a little bit different because of that settlement. Um, and how they came to us. And I think we were able to really maximize um some of the protections in the agreement for the city specifically. So I wanted to thank Lynn and Dennis for their work on that.
Thank you, Tanisha. We're gonna go to Rob and then Jim.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
That, I just saw Lisa's in. Rob, Jim, Lisa.
Thanks, Deb, for the electrifying uh presentation. Um. You know, I, I think it's really important that we, we plug into this progressive technology as we're moving forward. Um, because really, you know, folks can charge in their garages, but if they want to go anywhere, um, they need to be able to access this technology. And so, you know, proliferating it kind of is the way Ryan said, in an equitable way is, is, is important to the city, particularly as we're having folks um visiting. Um, and, and so m- my line of questions is kind of along the lines of where Ryan was going with respect to the 5G um cell. Considerations that we're having, where, you know, we were talking about private technology that is occupying our rights of way and our property. And so. You know, I, I don't know if we've thought about it and, you know, I'm not sure if the demand is here now, but maybe in the future. You know, do we have a plan with respect to how we will consider requests like these? Or if we would consider requests like these, for example, if Tesla were to come along and say, well, Pepco's in your right of way. And they're accessing your parking spaces, can we put one right next to them? And then the next company comes in and how, how will we ultimately allocate those? And so we kind of had those discussions with the, the, the various um DAS providers and 5G cell providers coming in. And how we would ultimately equitably um allow them to access the rights of way. So. Uh, are we giving thought to that or will we be giving thought to that?
Rob, who, who would you like to direct the question to?
That's probably a Dennis question. I mean, he's, it's, you know, he was the 5G guy.
Trying to find my uh mouse. Um, at this point, we haven't had that many requests. Um, I think it is something that we do need to look into, as you pointed out, um, with regard to the future. Um, as more EV vehicles come online, we may get additional requests. So staff will take a look at what. Uh, we can do and other communities are doing to regulate it, especially in the right of way. Uh, that is something. That probably will become more prevalent as we look for other locations. Uh, for people to charge their vehicles in unique spaces, whether that be Main Street on Kettlin's. And we did kind of look at that, that would be the one, Ryan, that we looked at, that we felt that the parking was too tight already. Um, so we did not uh decide to move forward with that one.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I would just, you know, as this technology is, is ballooning, particularly in the past few years. And we expect it to, you know, transitioning from fossil fuel to electric, these are going to become more. Um, prevalent. So I, I would just charge you to, you know, take a look at those regulations and how we would regulate our public spaces. Um, the second question is kind of with respect to the maintenance um. Of these and, and kind of once the equipment's in the, the right of way, what happens then? You know, i- is it, I, I heard that somebody mentioned that Pepco would be primarily responsible for this, not a third car. Uh, third-party vendor, is that with respect to maintenance as well? So if there's a service call, for example, a, a down unit, it's Pepco that would actually be responding to it. Um, are there any like timeframes as to, to the adequacy of their service built into the agreement? And with respect to like, after the five years is over, are there. Uh, responsibilities and costs allocated with respect to the removal of the equipment from our property?
The agreement requires them to maintain the facility. There aren't specific guidelines in terms of how quickly they must respond to, you know, a request. Unit is down. Uh, their agreement also covers that if the agreement is not renewed after the five-year period. Or one of the extensions, they would have to remove all of the equipment related to that. And in some cases, we may want to negotiate that. That move forward, because they are providing connections to the nearest transformer. Uh, that would allow us to maybe get another party, a vendor to install an EV charging station at that location. So we, we are trying to think of that as a future foolproofness. Should Pepco decide to, you know, honestly get out of the business? Or that we find it's more appropriate for us to find another vendor.
Okay, thanks, Dennis. And the, and the last is just a comment, um. Kind of about what Ryan was talking about with respect to the regulation of these spaces and that whether we should think about it or not, particularly as. The technology hopefully pro- proliferates, um, whether our ordinances are adequate to be able to. Assure access to these technologies as they um become available. But thank you.
Thank you, Rob. We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Deb and Dennis for the presentation. Um, I want to talk a little bit more about um some of the issues. That Ryan and Neil and Rob have brought up as far as equity and access and um. Starting off, do we have an idea as far as kind of what the use cases for each of these locations are going to be? Are we expecting that drivers are going to use this when they are at an event at one of these parks? And charge within, you know, the hour that their kid is at a game or whatever, and then leave? Or are these meant more to be, you know, an overnight charge for people who live nearby that don't necessarily have their own. Um, charger, particularly multifamily units?
We would anticipate that these would be used when someone has the facility as opposed to an overcharger. Um, but that could be a possibility. Um, in particular, I could see possibly the public works one over by Robertson Park. Where we have a lot of apartment uh uses there. They might use it for an overnight charge. But my guess is the other locations would be more, you attend an event at the park or at City Hall. And you would get your charge during the time you were there.
Okay, you know, uh, do we know, the, the map on page eight was helpful to see kind of the distribution across the city. Do we know the spread between the level two and the rapid chargers across the city?
Not anecdotally, I could say that ninety-nine percent of them are level two chargers.
Okay. Okay, just the, the, the optics of there being one rapid charger and it being in the Kettlins. You know, the folks over on the east side where I live are going to be like, again, the Kettlins is getting the supercharger. Um, and, and getting the, the fast thing. And from an equity standpoint, if you think about those overnight charging of the rapid, you know, the. Filling up the vehicle kind of thing. Um, you know, again, anecdotally, one would think that more folks in the Kettlins may have already installed their own. Uh, charger for those overnight kind of opportunities. Um, whereas people in the multifamily buildings, uh, you know, near Morris Park, uh, near uh, Public Works, near City Hall. May not. And I'm just wondering if that is the, the best way to distribute those resources.
Yeah, so we actually pushed back on Pepco with the exact question that you're presenting. Um, and their um initial comments included the, the um existing transformer there was the only one that could support that. Um, particular speed of charging in that location. So that was why, why they recommended that site for the DC pressure.
So does that mean that there can't be any rapid chargers on the, the elsewhere nearby? Because I would think that any rapid charger that was going to be installed anywhere elsewhere would need that type of infrastructure. So I'm just curious if, you know, it, it sounds like you were asking the same questions, but. More for the public than anything else. I think it's important to have that conversation.
Absolutely.
Pepco would indicate that they would need to upgrade the transformer, which requires a lot of additional work. In order for the other sites to be able to host that uh fast charger. So we did try to do an EV distribution, but that wasn't possible given the current infrastructure.
I think it supports, um, you know, the notion that, that the vast majority of, of these publicly accessible chargers in our community. Are the um level two chargers because of existing electric infrastructure.
Gotcha, okay. Um, I think I have one more question. No, I think, I think that covers it. Um, I appreciate the fact that, that, I mean, I'm not surprised that you're on top of it, but. Um, I think it's just important, obviously, the Super Bowl, um, there were so many electric vehicle commercials. I think this conversation is very timely. Uh, I have not gotten on the bandwagon yet, but I, I keep, I mean, I'm looking longingly at some of these uh new electric vehicles that are coming out. But I do think it's important, particularly folks that, you know, to, to Neil's point, to Ryan's point, that don't have that access. Um, that we need to be thinking about, you know, if it's going to take eight hours, there's only one spot in Morris Park, first person that gets it, that's theirs. You know, for, for however long and it becomes that, that leapfrog game. So, um, hopefully we get more and more of these, we get more partners that are, uh, will approach the city. Is this becomes, you know, more adopted, more ubiquitous. And I'm excited that we're, you know, thinking ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We'll go to Lisa. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I was just gonna say, um, that the, we opted for one spot at Morris Park, but that charger will still have two uh. Ports, so there could be a separate vehicle when we go to final install, we could move it over slightly to be accessed to two. That was a big push or something that people wanted. Um, just wanted to add that. And then once the metered cabinets and service areas are there. Without being an electrical engineer, I think it's a little bit easier to get them in the ground.
All right, we'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Deb and, and Dennis for this presentation. This is, this is exciting stuff. Um, what, to see this new technology, this new opportunity come into play and to see the city of Gaithersburg. Progressively going there, um, is, is very exciting. So thank you for, for your presentation and the information you, you provided. Uh, my, most of my um colleagues here have asked the questions and stolen my questions. Um, thank you. And I, and I am a lover of puns and I don't know if we heard maybe Rob's unintended pun of charging Dennis. So I, I don't know if that was intentional, but that was a good one. Um, the, uh, I did, I, you answered the question. But one of my questions was about the transformer that allows for, for the faster charge. If there were other places within the city that they were available. And, and you did answer that question, so thank you. Um, the, the other last question I had was if a person is charging for eight hours or overnight. And leave their car unattended, unattended, is there concerns with it, with a vehicle being unattended overnight or even for several hours? Um, of being in a public space and I, theft or damage to, to the car. Is that something that was taken into consideration? Are there cameras on site? Is it, is the area, are the areas being monitored at all? For vehicles that could be unattended for hours?
So for some of the sites, we would have cameras, um, in terms of City Hall has cameras, but not all the sites would have cameras. We didn't see that as a big issue based upon what we've seen in other locations. Um, throughout the city currently, you know, even though it has a camera on it too, we have sites at the activity center. And there are long time periods where a vehicle might be unplugged in there just based on when the building is accessible to the public. You know, they're open until ten o'clock at night. Um, so we haven't seen that yet. We will take that into consideration should we have some problems.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Jim and then Neil.
Yeah, just to follow up on Lisa's uh question, because she brings up a good point about, you know, someone leaving a vehicle overnight. A number of our parking lots, if I'm not mistaken, do not currently allow overnight parking. Um, I, I'm not certain if the ones that are in play here are some of those. Um, but would that require a change and would that just be something that happens at the um administrative, administrative level? Um, would we then have to consider allowing parking um overnight for non-electric vehicles in those spaces as well?
Dennis, we're gonna let you answer that question.
My mouse between the two screens. Um, some lots are restricted to overnight parking, some are restricted to permit parking. It would be signed that way to allow for overparking if that's what we choose to do overnight parking just for those spaces. Uh, that's how we would probably.
That was all. Thank you.
Okay, Neil and then Ryan.
All right. So while we were talking, I was doing a little bit of web browsing to see what else is going on in the area. I'd like to point out that the county has offering charging stations in various parking uh areas throughout the county. And one point that they've made is that uh they live, even though they're level two chargers, they limit parking at any charging station to four hours. So we should think about what we're going to do in terms of making sure that people don't, don't, you know, monopolize any of the. Particularly their parking spots. Um, also, according to chargehub.com, the uh, the um charging stations at the Rio. And at Crown are both the um level three DCFC chargers and there's. Uh, looks like there's one in, in McDonald's and Durwood and others around. So there are some around, but I think as Deb said, most of them are the. Level two chargers, but there are some level threes in the area, so there must be some infrastructure that supports them. But anyway, I, I, the point I really wanted to make before I did that, uh, found that website was that. Um, I think we need to think of very seriously about uh time-limited parking at these stations so to make sure that it's fair for everyone. You know, you might not be able to fill it, fill your battery all the way up, but at least you get enough of a charge to get yourself going.
All right, thank you, Neil. We'll go to Ryan. Yeah, just a couple of quick points. One of the ways that uh time limits uh or energy usage limits are imposed. Uh, by the charging station providers is that there is actually a, uh, in some cases, a sort of a fee. That's imposed for staying there in the station plugged in too long. I know that uh in many Tesla stations, for example, um, you know, once your battery hits full. I know that uh, in many Tesla stations, for example, um, you know, once your battery hits full, if you keep your car there and plugged in for too long, you know, a meter, a separate meter starts running basically on a, 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 a sanctioned charge, if you will, that's trying to encourage people to get out of there so somebody else can come in and use the charger instead. I don't know if Pepco is thinking about having some feature like that, that um, you know, might be an option, but something to think about as well in our com- uh, communications with them as they, they plan these stations. The other thing I wanted to just point out is that uh, Tom Lonergan Seager uh, just sent me a quick note as we were talking about um, whether or not we would consider a local law uh, to limit the use of these parking spaces to only those who are actually trying to charge their vehicles. There is actually a state bill pending uh, in the General Assembly right now uh, that I believe has already made it through the House Environment and Transportation Committee that would essentially, as I understand it, require any EV charging station parking spots in public parking lots uh, to only be used for EV charging and would come with basically a, a state fine uh, civil infraction that could be imposed for somebody uh, using that spot for any other reason. I don't know if that bill's gonna get passed this year or not, but uh, something for us to keep an eye on. And I guess we gotta look at the fine print to see if it would apply to our local efforts, but it looks like it might, in which case the decision would sort of be out of our hands if the state passed a law saying you have to use these parking spots for only EV charging.
All right, uh, Tanisha.
I was just gonna mention that, you know, the, the spots will be signed that way. And I think much like the Evan of the uh, expected mother in small vehicle and, and other special parking spaces that we've seen uh, kind of ev- evolve over, you know, the last decade or so. People are generally respectful of that. I don't anticipate that we'll have a lot of issues, at least out the gate, but it's certainly something for us to monitor. And, you know, the other thing is we want to push as much of the uh, regulatory and administrative burden to Pepco, right? These aren't, these aren't our stations. They, they are on our site. Uh, but we want, we don't want to create a myriad of rules that be, then we need to police. Um, since we certainly have other things to do with our time than monitoring how long the vehicle's been at the charging station. So I think there's been a lot of great discussion tonight and maybe some self, uh, some uh, uh, automated ways, right, that can be installed in the actual charging station itself that might uh, discourage leaving the vehicle too long, as Ryan mentioned, uh, and other things. We, we can have more conversation with Pepco about that particular design, which is another, um, another thing that we were able to get into our agreement. They still need to go through a little bit of our entitlement process, so that is helpful for us to continue discussions with them. So thanks for all the input tonight. I think it was great.
All right, well, I do want to open it up for the public, if anybody from the public would like to speak. Tech team, if you could play the instructional video for anybody who's interested in testifying tonight. This is, this will be how to do it.
Good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Okay, so if there's anybody in public who'd like to speak on this issue, use the Zoom raise hand function. I'm looking and I'm not seeing any hands go up currently, so um, so we will leave it at that. Thank you all. Um, and as Dennis opened the meeting, where they weren't really looking to us for, for guidance, but I think they got some guidance anyway. Um, so we appreciate that. And Deb and Dennis, thank you guys so much for leading us through the through all this, and we'll look forward to seeing how it progresses. And with that, um, I will remind everyone that we, our next meeting, I think, is on the twenty-second. Is it not? Tanisha, we're on the twenty-second because of
Because of President's Day.
President's Day. I'm look, and I would have known that, but I'm looking at the wrong month in my calendar here. Uh, okay, so it's President's Day on Monday, so the, the next regular meeting will be on the twenty-second, Tuesday, seven-thirty PM. You can, you can join us the same way you're joining us now, with, whether it's a stream, whether it's on the Zoom. If you'd like to participate in the Zoom, then go to gaithersburgmd.gov/virtual and sign up. And I will um, note that next, next week's meeting, the, the one on Tuesday, the twenty-second, will be virtual, but we will be going back to in-person meetings on the twenty-eighth for that work session. And hopefully from thereafter, um, and we're really excited about it. We are, we are getting back to uh, in-person activities for the city, including the um, St. Patrick's Day Parade, which will be on Mar- Saturday, March twelfth. We are planning to do this in person. Uh, which is really the only good way to do a parade is in person. And um, and there will be a book festival coming up on May twenty-first. You're uh, without a doubt, gonna hear about that from, from me quite a bit uh, over the next few months. So until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.